Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, March 10th. It's a little bit past four o'clock, but we can go ahead and get our meeting started. If I can get a call to order and a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Shirley.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
All right, if I can get everyone that can to stand up and say a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Father, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards or proclamations today, so I'll go ahead and go on to citizens forums. This is a time for anybody to come up that has something to say that is not on today's agenda. This would be your opportunity to do so. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Vent and I live at 741 Guernsey, apartment number 12 here in Salina. On February the 14th, The Hutchinson News published an editorial that was subsequently reprinted in the Salina Journal. I quote in part, quote, "In April 2012, Johnson County Sheriff, Kansas, sheriff's deputies in full tactical gear raided the home of Leewood residence Robert and Adeline Hart and their then seven and 13-year-old children. During the raid, Robert Hart was held on the ground while an officer kept an assault rifle trained on him." Continuing to quote, "The fruitless raid was based on information from the Missouri Highway Patrol that the Harts had visited a hydroponic store and left with a bag of indoor gardening merchandise. While the heavily armored and armed officers expected to find marijuana, what they found were two scared kids, some tea leaves, and tomato and squash plants. It took nearly a year for the couple to learn that the baseless raid was founded on their visit to the gardening store and the three times police dug through their trashcans and found tea leaves they believed were marijuana." End quote. In light of the nationwide increase in this sort of police behavior, I wrote to our new police chief and asked the following question, quote, "Would you please tell me your thoughts or philosophy concerning the time and place when militarized police action, such as a forced-entry raid, is appropriate?" End quote. I also wrote, "It is my understanding that dynamic support of police by an informed citizenry is a necessary ingredient for public safety. I received no response from Mr. Nelson, but I did get a letter from a city bureaucrat informing me that I would not receive any answers." I quote, "There are many aspects to a policing action that are not always known or understood by the police." End quote. So let's talk about Salina policing action. Those of us who have been around recall well the following. In the not-too-distant past, there were simultaneously multiple lawsuits filed by Salina residents against local police officers and this body. These legal actions were precipitated by a crime wave of illegal action committed by Salina police officers. During this ugly period of Salina's history, one of the more vicious attacks perpetrated by the police resulted in the victims going to the emergency hospital department where they retreated for the injuries they received. That attack led to one of the several lawsuits. It ended with a jury ordering the city to write a check and also with punitive damages levied against the then-police chief. A second lawsuit was resolved in part by this body's adoption of an city ordinance that was dictated by a civil rights attorney quoting verbatim from the relevant U.S. Supreme Court ruling Terry v. Ohio. For a city bureaucrat to write that no answer need be given to a citizen's questions concerning police policy is wholly inappropriate, unethical, and factually wrong. There exists in this country something known as rule of law. Evidently, this concept is beyond the comprehension of certain persons, but I am here to assure you that citizens, such as those Salinans who are lined up at the federal courthouse door, are fully aware of their rights and are equally well-prepared to assert them, whether in the face of illegal stops and searches, illegal violence committed by cops, or Gestapo-style raids exemplified by that cited above. Attempts that rule from above are a cottage industry of those infused by the cult of hubris, and they have met their comeuppance in Salina. As we have shown, the citizens of Salina say no to unacceptable conduct on the part of their employees. Bob Schacochis writes, quote, "An informed citizen presents a danger to all those who would wield power over the life of their societies. For an informed citizen, first and foremost, measures the use and abuse of power by its impact on the common person. Most important, a citizen who has informed himself or herself has earned the right to speak out, a most provocative act even in a democracy." End quote. The author of this tripe that I received ended his letter with the following, "I realize this is not the answer you were expecting." Well, that's wrong. I wasn't surprised him at least. Thank you.
I can't comment to any of the legal things. One thing I would say, and maybe, I don't know what the wording that you received, but one thing I would say is that I often encourage, in fact, I've even maybe discussed up here too, that it is probably not good for us to talk about police tactics, anything, when and where we may, the police may respond to a certain thing. I think that puts our officers at a disadvantage. And the only thing I would say, I don't necessarily have a problem with anything else you've said, I would just say that maybe not receiving the answer may be more of a tactical thing than just a direct disrespect or anything like that. I don't even like when we discuss how many officers are on duty at a time. I just don't think that the public needs to know that as a general rule. I suppose if you wanted to inquire, we would probably be obligated to answer that, but as a general rule, I don't think it's a good idea to talk about what our law enforcement is doing that may endanger or allow criminals to take advantage of that information. It's not a secretive thing. It's not that your government's trying to hide things from you. It just seems a bit more practical for their protection. I can't answer your case in Missouri or wherever that happened, or the lawsuits here. I don't recall any lawsuits since I've, in recent years.
No, I can probably answer a lot of those questions. First, let's identify the bureaucrat. That's me.
You're not a bureaucrat. You're an employee.
Yeah. What he was requesting was actually information about a raid in Columbia, at the Columbia, Missouri Police Department.
Actually, I asked several questions, including the one that I quoted.
Well, I'm going to speak right now, if I may, sir.
Well, what you said was factually wrong.
Sir, let me speak, please. Okay? I'll let you speak.
You write a letter to me. You have something to say, write me a letter.
Sir, I expect common courtesy. Just let me speak.
I expect the common courtesy in my letter.
I will, so anyway, he was referencing specifically and very directly in his letter some kind of an incident in Columbia, Missouri. He was asking for an opinion on that particular incident. And what I stated in there is, Chief Nelson asked me, he said, "Should I or how should I respond to that?" And I said, "I'll respond to that," because he's in a position, being from Columbia and working for the police department at that particular time. However, he was not directly involved in that raid whatsoever. It'd be inappropriate for him to provide an opinion about a raid of his department, professionally and otherwise. So that was the, my response was specific to that question. And then he did, to his credit, he did ask more about our general policing tactics. And again, we don't feel that that's appropriate. We do know, and I will emphasize, we do know that, you know, we need to have the best information possible before you conduct what would be truly a raid. Now, he made reference to a lawsuit. First of all, every lawsuit that's filed, we discuss with you in executive session. And you've noticed you haven't had any on the police.
Not since I've been elected.
Because we haven't had any recently. One that was referenced goes back even prior to former Chief Hill's tenure, which is over 20 years ago.
Sure.
So not in recent years, as quoted.
No, and it's not to say we don't make mistakes, because again, you deal with the best information you have and you try to make a judgment call. So it's not uncommon, you go, it's possibly the wrong place, you banged up the door, you're going to get an insurance claim, the insurance company takes a look at that on our behalf. And that happens on small things like that. So, yeah, my response was based on mostly the provision of information about, one, our procedures we approach or apply here, and also the Columbia situation, because I didn't feel that was appropriate. It's very appropriate to be concerned about those things. There's no question about that. And, but when we're, there's a lot of things thrown out, like all the increasing claims, blah, blah, blah. There's no data. There's none of that here.
Right, right.
Nationally, I don't know. I haven't looked, I haven't looked to see if there's an increase nationally. There might be, there might not be. We really don't know. I don't know. We try to pay more attention to what we do here, and certainly we do that. So that gives you some context to that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can't say enough, and I mean, maybe it just sounds, and again, I support, if there were true issues that the gentleman had, of course, I support that. But I can't think that, I mean, I'm sure there'd be people out there who think that the incidents are wrong, but I think we have an extremely professional law enforcement agency. I know when I worked with the sheriff's office, the extra steps they took, you know, in doing their jobs and trying to reach out to the public, I think is probably much above the standard. And I think with the new chief and his plans to put more people on the street, I think we're going to enhance that. So I wouldn't want anybody at home to think, like you said, that anything is coming, that there's been, like you said, an increase in any of this. I haven't seen anything but quite good responses about how our law enforcement works in this town.
Yeah, and I will say on Chief Nelson's behalf, he's very oriented towards what is true community policing. Community policing isn't just driving through just to show off a vehicle or a bicycle, but without having impact. Community policing is forming relationships so you can get information to help you solve crimes. And he's a big believer in that, in being a part of the community in that way. And so, yeah, so the statistics that were thrown out, it would be contrary for us to want to be in those statistics. And so, we do everything we can, and it's subjective to make sure that when we apply policing, that we do it in the most professional way possible. We will not be right 100% of the time, but my hope is, is that we'll be right more than the other agencies and we'll do the best job we can. And I have confidence we will.
Good.
Very good. All right. Is there anybody else here for citizen forums? No? Okay. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so I go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1. Approve the minutes of February 24th, 2014. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2014. And item 6.3, authorize the purchase of one halogen valve controller at the water treatment plant.
Is there anything that a commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent No typos or anything?
That's what I'm saying. Well, Randall's not here today, so.
No, it's okay. I thought maybe we'll give a shout-out for Randall. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Go on to administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 14-10732, establishing a 90-day moratorium on new hookah bars and vapor bars. Item 7.1A, declare an emergency exists for second reading on the same day. 7.1B, second reading ordinance number 14-10732.
Mr. Gage.
Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Recently, staff has received several inquiries from folks in the community about opening hookah bars. What we found is, and also we have, makes reference later in the report, there's actually two vapor bars, which are the e-cigarette-type bars that we're aware of. We were aware of one at the time of the report. We don't define those anywhere in our zoning code. And what happens is, is that the zoning administrator has discretion if he believes that a particular use is very, very similar to an existing use. You grant him, through the ordinance, the ability to say, "I think that's like that use and it's allowable." In looking at this, Dean didn't believe that this use is like those other uses, because all these uses, a lot of them at least have their own characteristics. And so, at this point in time, what we did is, is we began taking that to the planning commission to look at, and it'll eventually come to you. But what it comes down to is a question of what do we do in the interim? And before I go any further with that, well, we've got a graphic, I think, if we can throw that up on the screen. There we go. Thank you. And what that does is, is it gives you an example of what we're talking about, and for those who aren't aware of that. When we talk about hookah, that's the device you're seeing. You're seeing two examples, one where you can kind of see inside of it, and then the other. And for those who really don't understand, what you're doing is you're burning a substance. And generally, a hookah bar is a tobacco bar. And by nature of our tobacco ordinance and our interpretation of that, that would be illegal. But one request that we have received is for a non-tobacco-type hookah bar. So anyway, there's a possibility, and it depends on where you'd want to go as to what you would do with that.
And is there a definition of the non-tobacco ingredients?
Well, that's a good question. At this point, it was more of a, it's more conceptual, so we don't know exactly what ingredients.
Right, right.
And see, it depends too on, are these ingredients only provided by the business entity, or can they be brought in by individuals and burnt in the hookah as well?
Right, right.
So there's a lot of things that lead to.
A lot of questions.
Planning questions, absolutely. So when we look at this, basically, there's a burning of a substance. Let's, in this case, say tobacco or non-tobacco substance. And really what happens is, is rather than someone like traditional smoking or inhaling, where it's the smoke, it's the vapor, and the substance goes through the vapor. You can see water in the bottom, and it's really inhaling of a vapor that contains that substance. And so, these can be where one person goes at a time, or there are those that have multiple pipes and, you know, you can have multiple people sharing at the same time, or you can pass around. There's lots of ways to do it. Some of the, just, there's a lot of concerns, and there's a lot of research, and Mr. Andrew provided an attachment into your report, and I won't get into that, and I will, at the point here, allow Dean to compliment and get into more detail if you'd like him to. But general concerns is that tobacco is often used. Now, again, the request that we have is for a non-tobacco hookah bar, but how it's regulated may determine if in fact tobacco can be brought in or not. Little information on other non-tobacco ingredients is what you were alluding to. Someone says this is the root or bark of something. We don't know what that is. Do we want to know? We might, we might not. As long as it's not an illegal substance, you might in the end say you don't, but probably ought to talk about it. Again, communal use is somewhat common. Some hookah lounges allow people to bring in their own substances, as I mentioned. And growing use of, by minors is a big concern. There's an attraction to minors. When we talk about vapor bars, okay, that's the e-cigarette, and it's a bar for, you can come in and try out your e-cigarette. And there's a lot of information on both sides of e-cigarettes. There's a lot of really great stuff, quite honestly. And there's some stuff that says, "Well, hold on a minute. We're not done studying it yet." And when you look at these, there's a kind of a little graphic on the bottom that sort of shows if you were going to be able to look inside. And basically, you have, you, there's a vapor, it has nicotine. It's a way of providing nicotine without the tobacco. And when you inhale, there's an anatizer that is essence, like a heater, it turns it into vapor, and then you breathe that in, and then you breathe out the vapor. And it's not a cigarette, and these are not, do not use tobacco products, but they do have, of course, nicotine. That's the whole point of them, is nicotine. Some of the concerns is that, again, legal age has not yet been determined, either at the state or federal level. You can get multiple flavors of this, so there, again, there's an attraction to minors. You can get, you know, candy flavors and things like that. It's not yet regulated by the FDA, though they're looking at it. There is, some research shows there's some concern, because it hasn't been studied, that some of the ingredients may contain carcinogenic materials. We don't know that for sure. It's a concern that kind of goes more to a broader federal level of regulation and review. And some research now suggests that an e-cigarette may actually become a gateway to using traditional cigarettes. So versus the, "I can use it to stop smoking," which I think, I think a lot of people would tell you that that can work, it could also be a way to introduce you and get your first step in. Whether that in fact is the case or not, we don't know. It's just some research says that it might be. So kind of coming back to the report, all these questions are in our mind as well. And so, the question is, what do we do? Well, at this point, if the zoning administrator does not believe that the hookah and vapor bars fit an existing use, they are technically illegal. And so, any of those that are open today, the two, couple vapor bars, would be illegal because they don't match up with the use. So I want you to keep that in mind as we think about this context. A lot of things you want to look at, eventually, potential health, safety, and welfare. As we think about the category, this is obviously going to be dictated by review by the planning commission with staff support, and it'll eventually come to you. And that's really what we're looking at. And will it be, would you say you don't want them at all? Probably not. Most, a lot of cities accept them in some form. Some have said not at all. Would you, would they end up being there as a permitted use or a conditional use in the zoning text? And again, that's not a decision for today. That's just, those are things that the planning commission, you'll take into consideration when it's brought to you. So the real policy issue today is whether we would enact a temporary moratorium or a timeout. And what that really means is, is we say that from this point forward, no hookah or vapor bars can be opened legally in the City of Salina until the planning commission and you, the city commission, have had a chance to address the issue in the zoning code and come to whatever conclusion that you might have. And we're asking for a moratorium, not unlike what we've done before with communication towers or drinking establishments or anything like that. One thing that's important to understand, though, is that the moratorium is drawn up to currently, while you go through the process and the planning commission goes through that, to allow those that have opened prior to today to stay open and not have to be closed down while you're considering it. It just stops the opening of new ones. And it was designed like that with the thought that you, we could be wrong as a staff, but we kind of guessed that this isn't such a, there's not information that says this is just an immediate danger, imminent threat, or anything like that. So we felt that you probably wouldn't want to harm someone who might have kind of innocently just assumed that they could open. We don't, I mean, we don't do business licenses, so they may have innocently assumed they could open that. So our intent isn't to penalize those that are open today. Now, if you should decide down the line that they're not permitted at all, they would have to close at that time. But in this interim time period, this moratorium just says, "No new ones, but those that are open today are considered legal until we finish the process and you decide," and the planning commission helps you decide what you want to do. So that's really what this is about. So we feel this is a moratorium that actually enables and helps and transitions more than just, you know, kind of says stops and upsets a lot of folks. We've got three action suggestions for you. Obviously, the first is approve on first reading ordinance number 14-10732, establishing a moratorium and declare that a public interest exists for having first and second reading on the same day, and approve the ordinance on second reading as well. The second is to decline it, but direct staff to proceed over the next 90 days with the city code review process. Now, if you decline it, those that did open prior to today would have to close because it would not be considered legal uses at the time. It's the moratorium that bridges those uses while you look at this, and then certainly any other action that you would deem appropriate. With that, we have to take questions that you might have. Certainly, our legal counsel's here for legal questions. Mr. Andrews here to answer more technical questions. He's done a great deal of research on these, and he'll be more adept at that than I am. So I'll try to help you out with your questions.
Couple of questions that, first of all, being, this 90 days, do you anticipate any, that it might take longer than that, being any appeals or, I mean, if it, any appeals or be open to the appeal process and so on, would 90 days seem adequate?
I think at this point, we feel 90 days is adequate. You do have the ability, if there's good reason, to extend the moratorium at a later point in time. So if we find we can't get our work done, but we're closed, and we need another 15, 20, 30 days or something, we could come back and ask, and you could decide if you'd like to extend that at that time.
Okay.
I might address that with another question, if I may, Commissioner, and looking to Mr. Gage. Am I correct that the 90 days was in anticipation of that period of time for the commission to take any legislative action that they might ultimately take?
Yes.
And that would be as far as you would be expected to go if there were appeals from that or other proceedings? I understood that to be anticipated outside that period of time.
Okay, great. Then the other thing is, is that with, being that it's a non-permitted use currently, that they're allowed to operate under this moratorium, would in no way make it, if the final decision were to come down to say, keep it non-permitted and they have to close down, they wouldn't be grandfathered at that point?
That's correct. And that's, there's a point of clarification I wanted to make with a statement Mr. Gage made, and just to be sure that we're on the same page. And I'll be sure that he has a moment here to be sure that we're on the same page. Jason, that's all right. I just wanted to make sure we were all together. I believe you made reference, whether intentionally or inadvertently, to it being a lawful use during the interim period of time. I would understand it to be, continue its status as an unlawful use during the term of the moratorium. What we, there's a, the moratorium has two aspects. One, the moratorium on the opening of any new businesses or the expansion of any current ones. The other element of the moratorium is a moratorium on administrative enforcement efforts relative to those open bars. So that it does put them somewhat in a limbo status, I guess you would say, in that, yes, they would be technically unlawful, but what we were suggesting to you as a means of calling timeout, so to speak, is not only from the standpoint of what others cannot do in that interim period of time, but also what the city cannot do in that period of time, and that is take an enforcement action against those that exist as of the time you would enact this ordinance, if that is your choice.
Yeah, that's exactly right. From a pure legal perspective, it is unlawful, but what we do with the moratorium is we're saying we're not going to enforce that at this time while it's being considered. Practically speaking, that message to the user is that if you opened prior to now, we're not going to come close you down and say you're operating something that's illegal at this time because we're lifting the enforcement. So practically, they don't have to worry about that while the process is, while more of the moratorium's in place, if they've already opened.
And certainly, how we approach that is your prerogative. That was just a suggestion or an approach that we laid out that enabled more of the true timeout for that period of time. But if you have a different wish as to how we handle the ones that have been opened, then that is your prerogative.
Yeah. Commissioners, I think the point to take in this, which is, when you think of it very technically and very legally unlawful or unlawful, Greg's point's very clear, because we would not want to erode, that's a good point, by legally saying it's lawful, you may erode into a grandfathered status. It's not our intention to do that. So he's correct. Legally, it's an unlawful use, but we're saying we're going to, we're not going to allow anyone to start that use from this point on, and we're not going to enforce our, use our enforcement authority on those that have opened prior to, let's say, the time of the moratorium, so that they could continue to operate without worrying about that.
And to the, to the ones that are already operating, two of them, are we confident that these, both these establishments are not violating the, is there any way to determine whether they're burning tobacco or not? I mean, I understand that there are the ways of doing it without the tobacco and...
Yeah, I don't think we're confident of anything. I think, we just said it's not imminent enough to get that deep at this time. There was, one of the locations had an event, a media event, and I didn't hear the, it was one of those live radio stations, that location. I didn't hear it, but we had someone in the office that said that they, in that, had said, and this was a vapor lounge, which is an e-cigarette place that you could bring in your tobacco, or made reference to tobacco, which is odd, because if you look up any information on e-cigarettes, they all appear to be tobacco-less. But what it does is, it prompts simply the question of, "No, we're not confident. We're not sure." So anything tobacco is illegal, no matter what, and we could enforce, our enforcement authority is there if there's tobacco-related. But again, it prompted a question of, if we did regulate it today, how would we do that? And so, that also helped us to decide, you know, we have quite a few questions with these that need to be addressed, and hence the moratorium. But we're not confident, to go back to your question, we're not confident we know enough about either of them at this point in time.
And has staff, within, in addition to this, has there been any, I know there's a hookah lounge in McPherson, and does, do we have any information on maybe what their ordinance suggests? Apparently, if they have or don't have a smoking ordinance and any of that. I mean, just using that as an example, because it's probably the closest geographically.
Yeah, I'm presuming, from a smoke, from a tobacco perspective, they probably fall under the state law. I don't know that they've carved out their own ordinance. As far as their activities and what they do there, you know, we're in the process of gathering up that information from, of course, here and other places as well, and that's something that Mr. Andrews gathering up as we get started with the planning commission and then bring it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I did have one other point of clarification to follow up on Commissioner Blanchard's point. The subpoint B under section 2 of the moratorium does specifically refer to the moratorium in relation to enforcement as being limited to the zoning code. So normal enforcement could occur in those locations.
Right.
So, normal enforcement could occur in those locations relative to the smoking ordinance.
Okay.
In that that moratorium is limited to the zoning code. One other quick point that, in relation to minors, Daniel Craig with CKF, who is in the audience, was kind enough to call me this morning and point out that the Kansas Legislature has addressed a prohibition of either the sale or, either providing or minors obtaining e-cigarettes in fairly recent legislation. I advise Mr. Andrew of that, but I did not advise Mr. Gage, and that's my, my mistake. But that is just one other aspect, to be sure you're correct, or that you're aware of the latest information about that.
Are you, are you saying they've, you said they've addressed it. Is that what you said?
Yes.
That they have passed anything on that?
In short, it simply says, it shall be unlawful for any person, and then there's, of course, a litany of violations, one of which is to sell, furnish, or distribute cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, or tobacco products to any person under 18 years of age. So, they added that to that prohibition. And then, in turn, for anyone who is under 18 years of age to purchase or attempt to purchase cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, or tobacco products, or similarly to possess. So, that's the way the legislature dealt with it. It appears that it was in 2012. Is that correct, Daniel? Yeah. 2012 is when the legislature included that in the prohibition.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff? Do we have any public comment on this? You can come on up to the microphone, please.
How you guys doing, Commissioners?
Good. And I'll need your name and address for our viewers at home.
It's Sophie Kia. My address is 917 Choctaw, Salina, Kansas. And I'm the owner of Salina Vape. It's right here next door. It's 117 East Iron, and it's a vapor bar. We help a lot of people who have problems with smoking. It's over, it's 18 and up because of the statute in 2012. When I went to get my license, they told me I have to post in my store, you have to be 18 to buy cigarettes. So, we are open, and we're just here to just, to answer any good questions that we have. We have Mike from the Salina Journal come visit us today to kinda give the public an idea of what e-cigarettes are, and, you know, I've smoked for years, you know, tobacco.
Right. Now, do you have, is it an actual vapor lounge that you operate?
Yes.
Or is it just the sell of?
It's a vapor lounge. And the reason why you do a vapor lounge is you can buy e-cigarettes at Pack Rat, and, but you don't know what they taste like. You don't know where it's made from. All of our juices are not, we don't mix them in the back. They're from clean rooms. FDA's gonna probably regulate it soon where you can't make your own juice. So, it's, you know, we try to follow the law.
What do you mean by, when you say you can't make your own juice, I don't know what that means. Can you explain that?
Well, people mix their own concoctions.
Oh, okay.
We don't do that because we don't have a clean room.
Right.
We buy our stuff from factories, licensed factories and everything, because it's a liability. We don't want to get into a liability issue.
Right.
I don't want anybody getting sick off my products, you know?
Right, right.
So, yeah, we do try to follow the law, and we went to planning, and we talked about the tobacco. We don't sell no tobacco there. You can't bring tobacco. It's not allowed in downtown area, you know? So, I think we put a lot of efforts in trying to be legal and trying to be with the law, and also try to help, you know, people kick the habit. I mean, it's not exact science, and if people do stop, people don't stop, but I think any help is better than no help at all.
Right.
Mr. Kia, in regard to this 90-day moratorium to give the planning commission and time to look at this thing and not deal with it administratively, would you be in support of, of this 90-day moratorium then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, we definitely need everybody involved in, just to go through, you know, because, I mean, a lot of cities are, I think that McPherson Hookah Bar, they closed it down because it's a tobacco bar, and, you know, Kansas law is you can't have smoke anywhere. I mean, I'm originally from California, and, you know, they do their, you know, it's, you guys got a tough job to do so, but, you know, yeah, I'm okay with the moratorium and everything, and...
Right, and it gives everyone more time to understand, you know, the vapor lounges and the hookahs, because a lot of people aren't educated on it, and I'm sure you understand.
Definitely.
As old people need to figure it out.
I'm old, too. I was born in the 80s, so...
Wow, that's old.
Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, that's it. I appreciate the time.
I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this? Any other questions for staff? And one last call for that. Okay, I'd bring it back to the commission.
I would just, I mean, I would just comment. It seems like they've really kind of gone out of their way to, to be legal. They've come and talked to the planning commission.
Follow the rules.
And follow the rules. It is, as technology changes and so many different aspects of our life, these things approach us, I don't know if there's potentially some fear. I mean, obviously, Salina was hit with the bath salts issue, and so there's, anytime something out of the ordinary opens up, you can understand, people get a little cautious and a little scared. I, in no way, shape, or form, see this as anything like that at all. I know people who, who have been smoking, people who are around me, and have switched these e-cigarettes, and I'll tell you, I'm very thankful for it, and I don't know that it's necessarily the answer, but it happened to be for the, the two people who I know, and I've definitely benefited from, from them switching to this. And so, I think if young people or old people alike want to start a new business, and it's legal, doesn't break the, the tobacco ordinance, and, and we have a way of still enforcing that if it does, I, I think it seems like it's kind of a win. CKF pointed out the state getting in there and, you know, saying that at this point, they don't feel like minors are, are, probably should be partaking in that as it potentially maybe could lead to smoking. I don't, I don't know that there's much out there to say that, but I think, like I said, you guys have done your due diligence. I don't really have a problem with this. If we fill up another downtown space with a legal business that, well, soon, potentially soon to be legal, ordinance or zoning-wise, I don't know what kind of zoning they're gonna come up with this on, but I'm sure Dean and the crew will come up with something back there, but, but I'm fine with it.
Is that a motion?
Well, I just, I mean, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we approve ordinance number 14-10732, establishing a 90-day moratorium on new hookah bars and vapor bars or the expansion of existing ones within the city limits of Salina.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 4-0. Do we need to make a second motion in for 71A?
Yep.
Yes.
Do we, do we need to roll on? Okay.
I have a motion for 71A to declare an emergency exists for second reading on the same day.
Uh, yeah, let's see. Madam Mayor, I move that we declare that a public interest exists for having the first and second readings on the same day and approve the ordinance on second reading.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on item 7.0A. All of those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we do a roll on that, or...
Yeah. I'm thinking we need, that's just the passage to put it on the agenda.
To put it on to the second, right?
Yeah. Now, we'll do the second.
I was, I was right on on that, right?
Yeah, you were.
I'm finally catching on to this first and second.
Hey, you got two weeks to go.
And you messed me up.
Yeah, two weeks to go.
All right, so...
Maybe.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 4-0, and we can go on to our second reading.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 14-10732.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no development business today. I do want to go on to other business, just real briefly. I know I've gave Mr. Gage a heads up that I was gonna talk about this a little bit. I've noticed over the last several months, as some of the other commissioners, is a lack of good rental housing and adequate rental housing in the city of Salina, and also housing in the market of $100,000 to $140,000. And I was trying to put together a study and get some money raised on my own here so we can get a study, so it doesn't tax the taxpayers. And I sent everything to the commissioners, and I'm hoping we can kinda move forward with it over the next couple of weeks here. I believe all of you got the email, and I can get some hard copies. Mr. Hobby, did you receive the email on the letter I had come up with?
I received it.
Okay. Is that who is next in line on receiving the letter I drafted?
Yeah, Commissioners, we figured that depending on, I mean, that's kinda your domain and how you wanted to handle it. If you wanted to make any final revisions, there's really not much we can, at this point, that we probably need to do until you say, you know, we have a letter to go ahead and solicit some funds for that housing study.
Right.
And then we can take off and do it. We're still in the process, right now, talking about a housing study of finalizing the scope of services and getting what would be a, a final cost on it, and I think roughly between 40 and 50,000 is where we expect it to be, but that's, that's the part that we're doing.
Right. And for the at-home players, that's why I have drafted the letter, and I'm trying to solicit the funds myself so we don't have to ask the taxpayers for the money and hopefully by donations that I can come up with this. I've been working with some banks and mortgage lenders and some realtors here in town to come up with all of this. So, you'll be getting the letter I drafted up, so you can kinda get a second look at it as well. So, I just wanted to bring that up under other business.
Yeah. I would just further that by saying one thing that we obviously could do, community-wide things that we've been working on, and that is to continue to hammer home our minimum maintenance codes, to bring up basically the overall quality of our homes in Salina, raising the values by making sure that they are meeting these standards, and, and, and hope to make reutilized use of what we have to kind of fill that market to where people feel like investing, and maybe some of those $50,000 to $60,000 houses, we'll let them grow to be $80,000 and $90,000 houses, too. So, I think there's affordable housing. I think there's also a fear that people who may invest in those neighborhoods may not realize their investment back, and I think that's why it's very important to, to make sure that we continue to hammer hard on those, those codes and, and make sure we look towards this code enforcement that we discussed maybe a couple of weeks ago, and, and continue to, to just hammer to make the city a better aesthetically pleasing place for people to make their investments.
We want people to move here. People want to move here.
Yeah, for sure, sure.
And we definitely need to start holding landlords accountable, you know, if they're not fixing, fixing their properties and, and not the one, not the one on State Street, of course.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. No, and absolutely right. Everybody, not, not just landlords, everybody, everybody, everybody needs to.
Everybody needs to, you know, to not be parking in their yards for Aaron.
That's right.
Because he will have a heart attack here in the next couple of weeks.
Have we heard anything? Yeah, have we heard anything back on that? Have we got any numbers, hard numbers yet?
Well, no, I don't have any hard numbers, but I, I've asked Mr. Hobby and our, our new chief of police to get together and coordinate because he could come from both sides.
Sure.
And our chief was in his, what they call reciprocity, training last week, which means you're from another state, let's teach it out Kansas, you can come in, so I expect they'll be getting together here pretty soon.
He's got a lot on his plate right now, and we understand that, but it is, it is an important issue, of course.
Mow your grass, pick the trash up out of your yard, it's not that hard. Go drive by my house. My, my yard looks pretty good. It's brown right now, but it's clean.
And just to pre, pre-add, and, you know, we're just, we're just running so short, I just, I would feel bad if we didn't run the meeting out a little longer.
Yeah.
Are we doing the house painting project that y'all do this year? Again, we look for some volunteer homes and, is that...
Are you talking about with the volunteer connection that we do for the...
No, I don't know how you, you, last year we did, what, 10 houses? I say we, not we, not I, they, did like 10 houses or so you painted, or...
That was two years ago, actually, Commissioner, that we did the houses.
What's the holdup? Why didn't we do it last year? Yeah.
We, we have a lack of people who are willing for us to go in and paint their homes. We have said, have contacted multiple people to do that, and some of the volunteers have been slowed down as far as their ability to get together for more than just one weekend a month, or some of that type of thing. We do have some extra paint that we'd like to give away that we have purchased a couple of years ago. We're talking about doing that on our spring spruce up day.
Okay.
What date is that?
That is April the 12th.
Okay.
On Saturday.
Titanic Day.
The major focal points will be working with the Big Brothers and Big Sisters on their new location, as well as some other projects around the community. And we do have some paint left over, and we've talked about having a free paint giveaway to those people who actually own their properties and work with us and show us that they have that property. So, we're coming up with a program to do that, and will be announced at the same time as spring spruce up is concerned.
And there you go, free paint. There you go. If somebody that you can't afford to paint their house here, you got some free paint.
Exactly.
Maybe, maybe our guys with the vapor bar can come out and help us, even help us paint.
Well, PR.
Yeah. It does hurt. Wear your, wear your shirts and promote your business. That's a good way to do it, volunteering.
Yeah.
If I could step back one, one session here, is we're talking about the, the parking in the front yard. The police chief and I have met several times, and Lieutenant Raymer is the one that's taking on that project as the spearhead for the police department. We are actually printing the notices at this particular time. We plan on doing a warning period for, until 1st of May, and then at that time, we'll go ahead and start enforcing the citations at that point, but we'll have those hopefully printed this week and be ready to start handing those out to various people parking in various areas of the yard.
Any idea, how much is the ticket fee gonna be? That's always been kind of a mystery for me.
It goes to municipal court, and I can't tell you right off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just a quick comment on the housing needs assessment, that I think it's long overdue. I believe we had one in 91, and I know that Mr. Hobby and I have had several conversations. I believe you went to Manhattan, maybe it was, or somewhere, and talked with some people about that. So, you've, you're familiar with sort of the need and so on, and some, I think that just, as part of that whole process, before we start to go out and ask people to contribute, maybe we can have a, sort of what we need that to look like, and, and I think start to narrow down what, what Mr. Gage was talking about cost-wise.
Right, right.
You know, because a lot of them are, have a lot of the very similar stuff, the demographics and the everything else, and they all, they all come with that, and so if we can maybe identify the, you know, what exactly it is that we need, because, you know, it really does, there's, these things can tell you, you can probably spend $120,000 or you can spend 25.